Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's council meeting. Uh, City of Anamosa City Council Agenda Regular Session, Monday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. Anamosa Library and Learning Center, one point zero roll call.
Crump.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Tuchin.
Here.
Zumba.
Here.
Stout.
Here.
Four of five count four, excuse me, five of the six council members are present in chambers. Uh, no one is remote this evening. Two point zero pledgeable agents.
My glad to raise your student flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
I ask that if you haven't already, please silence your cell phones. Um, and also want to take this opportunity to state that Zoom for the tonight's meeting is for viewing only unless pre-approved by Jeremiah for presenters. Three point zero consent agenda to review and approve. I'll read all the items listed. Council has the option then to make a motion to approve all listed items or signal them out, single them out uh for motion and approval. Item A minutes from August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three regular session. Item B minutes from August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three special session. Item C current bills. Item D liquor licenses. Item E noise street closure permit.
Second.
Motion by K, second by Teresa. All long together, I take it as the motion. Any discussion on the items for council? Any public comment? Penny, will you please conduct a roll vote?
Smith.
Yes.
Tuchin.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item four, public hearings, none. Item five, proclamations, none. Item six, proposed postponed items, none. Item seven, council action items. Seven point one project status update, H R Green.
Good evening, Josh Scanlon from H R Green, uh here to give an update uh on all of the different projects we have going on. You should have uh in your council uh packets and a or in your agenda um a breakdown from us. I can run through these with a couple of um couple of ones that I wanted to get uh the update specifically to you. Uh, the first is the Third Street Sidewalk Project. Um, we are working with city staff on trying to get the next steps in that Third Street Sidewalk uh initiated. Uh, probably the most critical item is to get a public engagement meeting scheduled. Uh, that was anticipated to be done as soon as this week. Uh, so that's something we would like to get uh on the books and scheduled ASAP. Uh, number two is the sidewalk program. Um, we, I think we've had a number of our staff in front of council before to give a presentation on that program. Um, I think the next steps are to see if you would like any assistance from H R Green to do a sidewalk survey or if that's being done by city staff themselves, uh just in an effort to progress that sidewalk program. A couple of the other ones on the agenda, I do have an agenda item for you on Jordan well, number six later on. I can answer questions on that now or come back with the appropriate agenda item. Uh, and then the last thing uh that I specifically wanted to bring up is the uh sewer project. Um, we have been uh fine, I think we've gotten to a spot where we finalize the design as much as we can until we uh sort out uh next steps on easements. Um, and that uh we would like to get in a a meeting scheduled with city staff and potentially the city attorney to identify a path forward on that project. So with that, I will leave it open if there's any questions.
Council, anything at this time? We may pick them up as those line items come before us.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Seven point two project status update Snyder and Associates.
This is just the document tonight. Um, essentially the three uh items that were on this uh update. I don't think there's really anything more with this. I think it's pretty straightforward unless uh anybody has any questions for me to go back to uh Snyder with.
Councils, anything you see listed in uh that status update that's presented that you would like clarification on? In seven point three, review and approve sale of city-owned personal property, twenty eighteen Pendle Hitch trailer.
Steve Agnes, utility superintendent, I don't know if you got any questions? We we got a thousand more. The offer was a thousand dollars more than what the trade-in was, so.
So just for clarification, one document says eighty-five hundred, one says eight thousand. Which one is it?
That the eighty-five hundred was what we put in. That's how we listed it. That's what we listed it for a price. And so the offer that was received was for eight thousand.
That's still a thousand more in trade was gonna be?
Trade was seven thousand.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff. Any council discussion? Any public comment? Penny, please conduct a roll vote.
Tuchin.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried. Seven point four, review and approval. Final draft of amended twenty-eight E agreement between the City of Anamosa and Anamosa Community School District regarding the use and maintenance of recreational facilities.
Let's go through.
Second. Motion by K, second by Alan. Also discussion. Public comment? Penny, please.
Zumba.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Tuchin.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried. Seven point five, review and approve. Final completion certificate and final pay request from from Boomerang Construction in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-eight dollars, fifty-eight cents for the Jordan Well number six bid prep package two project.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Any further discussion? Josh? Are you aware, has the count through this project, does the council incurred any additional expenses outside the scope or uh change orders that would be related to the contract?
Um, no, and H R Green, uh this, we've extended and tried to stretch out our initial budget for construction to accommodate the delays, so there's been no extra costs incurred on our part. Um, to my knowledge, I don't think any city staff or time or any other costs have been attributed to this delay.
Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions while I'm up here?
Doesn't appear to be in.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor. Um, Penny, would you please conduct a roll vote?
Stout.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Tuchin.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried. Seven point six, review and approve consent agenda. Pay request totaling ninety thousand, six pi- six hundred fifty-one dollars, sixteen cents. I'll read all the items and council has the option to uh make a motion to approve all or single any out. Item A from Snyder and Associates in the amount of five thousand, one hundred thirty dollars for the wastewater treatment project. Plant flow E P Q basin project. Item B Snyder and Associates in the amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars for the U S one fifty-one grade separation and roundabout project. Item C from Snyder and Associates in the amount of twenty-three thousand, four hundred twenty-seven dollars for the U S one fifty-one grade separation and roundabout project from Dave's Complete Construction in the amount of forty-four thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars, forty-one cents for the Anamosa Police Station renovation project, final payment, retainage. Item E from H R Green in the amount of nine hundred forty dollars, fifty cents for the wastewater treatment plant, flora, declora demo project. Item F from H R Green in the amount of one thousand, one hundred four dollars, twenty-five cents for the Cedar and Huber Reconstruction Project. Move to approve.
Second.
By Alan, second by K. Your motion is consent of all items, Alan?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Council discussion. Public comment? Penny, please.
Zumba.
Yes.
Tuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried. I would like to uh make the note for public knowledge that Dave's Complete Construction on the Anamosa Police Station Renovation Project uh has donated material and labor towards that project. Seven point se- seven, review and approve petition for waiver of city policy pertaining to Anamosa firefighters fall fundraiser ribeye steak sandwich dinner.
I wasn't sure exactly what the council might want or need on this. I borrowed this uh template from another, I believe it was a state government website. Uh, it probably could have been as simple as just including the policy um for the council and letting you uh look at that, but I guess I wanted to make it as official and transparent as possible. Um, got the uh benefit, this fund uh fundraiser uh plans going on and and in place. Uh, we just don't want to set ourselves up into a situation here where we are potentially violating policy uh in doing this. So I reached out to the city attorneys and they advised that uh we were lawful in our actions, provided these few guidelines, but just wanted to make sure the council was okay with uh temporarily uh waiving uh this section of the policy.
What say we be training?
The alcohol beverages division, uh anybody who serves alcohol is required to go through a specific training on what to look for and how to serve at the requirements surrounding that.
Now, let it list a date. Do we need to be more specific in like a a timeframe on that date? I know when the event starts, but in this waiver document, maybe include that?
We could, yes, the uh the event uh calendar here is just before that. If you want to uh fashion a motion uh to include those uh times, um you could certainly do that.
Is there?
I'm. Oh, I'm I'm a we petition for the waiver, um approving it with the modification to list from five P M to eleven fifty-nine P M on the September thirtieth.
Second. Motion by Jeff, second by Alan. Also have discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Stout.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yes.
Tuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried. Seven point eight, resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-four. Setting the date for a public hearing to approve phase two of the Second Street Lift Station and Sewer System Improvement Project.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for September eleventh at six P M.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Yeah, seven, September eleventh, well, falls within that specific timeframe of public notice. Penny? Yeah. You will? Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Council discussion. Public comment on setting public hearing date? Penny, please.
Zumba.
Yes.
Tuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried. Seven point nine ordinance, first reading. Amending chapter sixty-three of the Anamosa Code of Ordinance to designate the speed limits on the Old Dubuque Road Extension.
Um, this was just uh during the project, the uh engineers had specified for this to be a thirty mile an hour speed limit. And some of you may have noticed when you come, when you're coming in towards town to the south, as soon as you hit the roundabout, uh there's another speed limit sign that is specifies thirty miles per hour. Then there's not another sign, however, the speed limit on that section that was uh already existed is twenty-five. Uh, so it seems contrary. Uh, been talking with a few individuals, including Sheriff Grover today. Uh, I think what we uh decide decided if it was okay with the council, we would do a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit that would extend to that south portion of the roundabout. Then on the north portion, we go ahead and use those signs and it would be thirty miles per hour through what will be commercial and industrial um areas. Um, so we just need to make sure we specify what that is and get those signs put up.
I know you list listed the the foot dimensions down to East Main, but like approximately where would it switch? Cause it'd be twenty in there and then where does it switch to twenty-five?
Yeah, right around where it kind of separates off onto East Main and Old Dubuque Road. Um.
By L C C Home Decorating?
Yes, just right around that area. And that that verbiage is uh currently in the ordinance, so I just left that. So it's remaining uh starting in twenty-five at the same place. Uh, the end uh, the end location, however, said where Old Dubuque Road intersects with Highway one fifty-one. So we had to change that. Uh, and then to include that thirty miles per hour on the other side. Uh, essentially, we just moved each of these subsections down one and added the thirty mile per hour in.
Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Teresa, did you second? Thank you. Motion by Rich, second by Teresa, council discussion. Public comment? Penny, please.
Tuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yes.
Possible waiver, motion carried. Possible waiver of second and third readings. Move to waive the second and third reading.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Teresa. Any discussion from council? Public comment? Penny, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yes.
Tuchin.
Yes.
Motion to waive second, third readings carried. Seven point ten ordinance, first reading. Amendment, amending chapter sixty-five, the Anamosa Code of Ordinances to add a stop sign at the intersection of Davidson Boulevard and Old Dubuque Road.
Let's go through.
Second.
Motion by K, second by Jeff. Also discussion. Public comment? Penny, please.
Crump.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yes.
Tuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yeah.
Motion to approve carried. Possible waiver of second and third readings. Move to wa- waiver the second and third reading.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich, council discussion. Public comment? Penny, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Tuchin.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Motion to waive second, third readings carried. Seven point eleven, discussion of possible action. Hearing to appeal designation and removal of a dangerous vicious aggressive animal, Hoosman. You would, when you state your name and your.
Zero two six one three oh one East Pine Street.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, um, what happened on the incident was we're outside talking to a neighbor, uh our chocolate lab. Wife went in, checks up her chocolate lab, got pushed past her. Unfortunately, it grabbed our neighbor dog. I mean, there was just blink a second, I happened. That's the first incident ever happened with her. Um, everything was taken care of, the expenses and everything on that bill and everything, we took full responsibility for it. And uh, if anybody walked in my house right now, the only thing a dog would do is lick you to death. I mean, it ain't a vicious dog, as some people claim. So I may did grab another dog, yes, but as far as a human being, no. And I, if you want to see her, I could go get her, I guarantee you. She went bother a person in here. And I don't know if the wife has anything or Jamie?
I don't. I've been around these dogs for.
Please state your name and your address.
I'm Jamie Bergren and I live at three oh three South Booth Street.
Thank you, Jamie.
I've been around both of these dogs for as long as they've been alive, so probably about three, four years now. Uh, five years. And uh, we've had our dogs together um several times. Um, and there's not a vicious bone in either one of them, so I would also like to say that. I think it's just um, uh like, it just a freak accident of what happened. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have on that, I mean. And well, the owner of the dog even said it was a freak accident. She saw it happen and we were all sorry it happened. But dogs doing fine, running around the yard and everything, so. That's all I have.
Council, anything who reported it?
What's that?
Who reported it?
Hi, George.
Okay.
I had heard, I had heard about it. And I contacted, I talked to interim chief Brokaw because I had heard that Cindy had to go to the hospital.
The reasoning is that is because I knocked Cindy over grabbing my dog.
Well, let me finish the story. That she had had to gone to the, she went to the hospital because she thought she had a concussion and she had a puncture wound on the top of her foot from the dog's claw. And I asked him what constitutes a mandatory report from the hospital? Because I know a dog bite man is mandatory. And he didn't know and he didn't know anything about it. And he said he would look into it. And that's where the ball kind of got started.
Okay, Richard, I'll add to that. Cindy said her sandal actually did what? Cut her foot. It wasn't the dog. Cause that's exactly, you can ask the wife, she was standing there when Cindy said.
Well, I I'm just telling.
Well, I'm just telling you what Cindy told us.
I'm not, I'm not arguing about it. I'm just telling him how this process started.
Yes.
So. And I'm sure.
It was on hearsay at the time.
I had heard about. And I was just asking about if there was a report. And they followed up, so if they followed up on a report and if it was hearsay, you wouldn't be here today.
Right.
So.
I I took full responsibility.
There must have been something that occurred that caused the police to bring it to this point.
I, like I said, we took full responsibility. We had set, talked to Cindy ourselves, got everything. And she admits she went to say a word because she won't, you know, the dog is is not violent at all. Or vicious. It was a freak accident. I don't know why she did that. I don't know. Cause I was taking my foot outside the door. I was going like this, but why her dog was out there and dog was running back and forth around Cindy. I don't know if our dog thought we were getting bothered by her pup or what, but that's what it was. That's when the wife went in, checked up her and the dog came out, grabbed her dog and actually the dog, our dog never really got off the yard because I jumped on our dog right at the edge of the Smith. Our our curb, we don't have a sidewalk.
Okay. So I'm sure um interim chief Brokaw has a report.
Yes.
So we'll let him present his report.
Yep.
Good evening, uh Nick Brokaw, interim chief. So I guess we're this also the incident uh date is July thirty-first. Uh, I was contacted by councilman uh Crump on, I believe, the seventh of August. Uh, I signed officer Minahan to look into the incident and she made contact with parties on August tenth. Um. Essentially, what it breaks down to is the two parties were talking outside of the uh Hoosman residence. Um, the five-year-old chocolate lab uh exited the residence, ran out to the street. Um, Norton, the um other party involved stated to officer Minahan that the dog knocked her to the ground and that she hit her head on the pavement and had a cut on her right foot. Uh, and that her dog Miles sustained two lacerations, one that punctured his log, uh lung, excuse me, and that Reba, the chocolate lab, had to be pried off by uh Mr. Hoosman. Uh, Norton received treatment at Unity Point um and had several um scans down out of precaution. And Miles, the other dog, was treated at the Blue Pearl Emergency Vet Hospital in Cedar Rapids and had to be kept overnight due to his uh injuries. And they did confirm that uh the bills and things like that were worked out between the two parties. So uh, it's not uncommon, I will say, for us to receive information from a third party that a defraction or an incident may have occurred, occurred. Once we gather that information, we look at it and will um determine uh rather an investigation is necessary. In this case, we determined it would be um in the public's best interest to look into the incident. Um, through that investigation, it met the criteria uh for the vicious uh dog ordinance and the removal. Questions?
So I'm, I just want a clarification, I guess.
Sure.
She says she was knocked down by the dog.
Uh, according to the report, yes.
And Mr. Hoosman said he's the one who knocked her down. So there's a little discrepancy.
Sure.
And in that portion of it.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. Anything else?
You, you said, did you not say that it is, it is common for third-party reports? Is it on? Related to? Vicious dog and types of.
Vicious dog and, and any, uh. In our, in our field, uh, it's not always, uh, if you, to use the term, it's not always the victim that reports, uh, a violation or a crime. We often receive it from a neighbor or a passerby or somebody else. And then we investigate, uh, based on that information. Uh, sometimes we, upon the investigation, we find that. There's not information, uh, you know, evidence to merit a violation. And sometimes we do. So it's not at all uncommon to receive information from a third party.
But just not related to?
Yeah, I mean, we're all in sense, animals, uh, assaults, all sorts of things, yeah.
Um, I do have a question.
Absolutely.
Sorry about that.
Okay, no worries.
When officer Manahan?
Yes.
Was investigating, how did she find the demeanor of Reba Jo? Is that her name? Reba?
Um, I don't have that noted in. I don't have that noted in the report.
Okay. So. While I never did speak to Cindy about this. I did hear about it and that's. Kind of how this whole process got started. Cause I was curious about. You know, I thought the hospital was. Mandatory to report. I know dog bites, but I also thought scratches. And I was just clarifying, asking for clarification on that. And, um, he stated that he would look into it. And that's how we, how we got here.
Does council have? Any direction? That they would be looking to take to see?
If the officer investigating, uh, have a chance to, uh. Witness the dogs. Devenir on such?
It doesn't, it doesn't appear by officer Brokaw's statement. Janet, uh, Jerry?
He did not. He was out. She did not ask me, neither. I would have had your problem because she was adopted and. Rather than.
Jerry, can you come back up, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, just, you, you said that the, the dog is five years old.
Yep.
Or. Has it been in? Your possession the entire time?
The whole time, yes.
Well, I guess.
Yep, since he had a pup.
You've had zero instances prior to.
None.
Whatever occurred on. The thirty-first of July.
That's the first time ever. And actually, we, uh, I contacted Troy. Tappy.
Tori.
Tori, you know who I'm talking about up there in Cascade. He's a trainer. I'll just see if we can get, you know, take her up, get her checked, see if, on that part.
And.
Well, we just had her spayed. And soon as she heals up from getting spayed and we're gonna take her up and. Go with, see what he has to say. And you know his reputation, Rod. I mean, you've been around him.
Grew up with the man, yes. Play well.
So. There any question y'all want to ask me?
Look, doesn't appear, Jerry.
No, alrighty.
Coming back to forty.
Okay, I'll have to say. Y'all know I walk the streets all the time. They live a block down from me. I wouldn't even venture against how many times. The boys and I walk past their house. And the dog is worse on occasion out on a leash. Now they have a fenced-in pen. But I never had a problem with the boys. I visited in the basement when Reba Jo had her first group of puppies and she let me pet her baby. I'm not saying she has not changed, but my experience with them has been positive.
What kind of dog was the, maybe the, uh, contacted? Neighbor's dog?
Oh.
It's kind of little too.
Like little turd, just small, like eight pound dog.
And that's just a puppy too at eight months.
Sometimes it breeded, but, you know, I call them yippy dogs, but some dogs get really. Rambonchus and, and, uh, it might have triggered something there too. I'm just trying to get. What did the, did you put it on again, sir? I wish the neighbor's not here.
No, Cindy's here, not here.
I wish they'd been here so I could give them.
Well, we asked her to come.
What was her reaction when that, when this happened?
Uh. There, what did you say her reaction was?
Yeah.
Shocked, same as us, you know, that had happened.
Okay, secondly, how are they now?
Fine. I mean, we still get along, Cindy. Um, dogs are fine. I don't know, like I said, it was when I was taking my foot like this, playing around with them, the dog would turn around Cindy back and forth. And my dog was sitting there looking out the window and that triggered something with her or what? I have no idea.
Just trying to get a more clear picture of what happened.
And we're standing on the, uh, she was on the curb on the side on the street and I was standing in our yard. They're at the end by our mailbox here.
Thank you. Chief Brokaw? Did we happen to hear anything from the other party, um, as to whether they were interested in coming tonight or could make it or?
Uh, officer Manahan reached out and she was not interested in attending.
Did she provide a reason as to why or anything?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I'll ask the council. To make a decision on the agenda item this evening?
I just wanna, I, I've been thinking about this and I think since I am somewhat involved in this. I will be abstaining from the vote.
You'd be asking for public comment?
You know, I never gave that any thought, Nancy, but to stay consistent. Why not? Uh, does public have any comment on this?
Nancy Shaper, eight oh three North Division Court. Um. What I'd like to say about it is, this is the first instance in what, four that you've had come before you? Where the people have had a plan and implemented it before it got to you. To the council meeting. Um. The other ones, I actually, in my opinion, offered resistance to your suggestions. Well, no, I don't want to put him in the fenced-in yard. They like to go out the front. Oh, well. I don't know about building a fence in my yard. They all had excuses, in my opinion, on ways to remedy it. And these people do not. Um. That's not my opinion on one way or another on how you should vote. But. I admire them for that. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I would agree with that.
I think Kay's comment. Carries some weight also. We've got someone that's had experience around the dog. I'm not saying that another dog is, is, is not as important as a human. But, uh. Dogs have a tendency to react to dogs more than they do to humans. In certain ways, um. I've got a friend that's got a little, what I call a yippy dog, and if it sees another dog, it will go absolutely bananas, but it loves people. Um, it couldn't hurt anything if it wanted to, but, uh. I hate these things. I don't like dealing with it.
So I will move to reverse the action of the peace officer regarding the animals.
Motion by Kay.
Second.
Second by Teresa. Any other council discussion? Penny, would you conduct a roll vote, including all council members that are present?
Smith?
Yes.
Sheen?
Yes.
Dumba?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Tom?
Abstain.
There was three in favor of reversing, one opposed. The motion carries to reverse the action. Eight point zero, city administrator to the board.
Uh, I have nothing tonight.
Does council have any? Questions or comments for Jeremiah? Nine point zero, mayor and council reports, nine point one mayor's report. I also have nothing this evening. Nine point two council reports. Ten point zero, public comment for items not on the agenda.
Name is Ashley Letch. I'm at one oh two South Booth Street. I have. Brought back the attention to a aggressive dog two doors down from my house. That previously bit my child and was deemed necessary for. Training and adapt to stay in its home. So I brought plenty of things because I didn't realize we were in some sort of court proceedings and I was not prepared for our. Position last time, so I'm much more prepared this time. Um, I this time brought Steve's request for the hearing, saying this was an unknown person and that they were. Um, claimed to have been bitten. Along with his Facebook post prior to his petition, saying this was alleged. And it was a stranger. Um, not a, in, uh, acknowledging the fact that. It was the girl he's seen walking past his house for the last almost five years. I've also then brought pictures of his house as well as a video showing even most recently, the continued behavior that's not changed. This photo shows the front of his house with the plastic now boarded up doggy door that ran, the dog ran out of. The plastic is made literally out of like three mil that you would put up when you're trying to paint in a house. This is not a sincere doggy door, um, but now it's boarded up. The dog's still been remaining outside. We watched him then chase the dog back down yelling at her, um, because she was barking at people and the kids crossed the street. Here's more bites of my daughter's leg. This is taken yesterday, the last one where it's scarring. She still can't put pressure on her leg. She still won't walk outside. Um, I actually then condone my own petition. Which I brought in for you as well. Contoning hundred and seventeen signers as well as all my Facebook comments. Everybody noting that this action that you guys decided was. The not the right one, as well as comments from my petition signers. I brought in some facts in regards to, uh, animosa and Iowa's dog laws. In regards to leashing and tethering, as well as vicious animals, bites. Aggressive care and the wrong ownership. With dog owners and how they're supposed to treat their animal. Sorry, I'm, I also brought my animal, which is a very good reason as to. Why I don't like to walk outside of my house. Because I don't trust this dog anymore. Um, but this is a well-behaved dog who is ESA certified. And this is an example of what training looks like. But I did write a two-page explanation to be a little more organized in my statement. So on July eleventh at approximately one fifty PM. My fifteen-year-old daughter was walking home from a sleepover from her friend's house. She was carrying a couple of large bags and a few loose items, leaving her no hands to defend herself. As she was walking past a neighbor's house, two houses down from ours. She didn't see the angry dog, as she calls it. The border collie wasn't leashed outside, so her guard was down and she remained on the sidewalk. Normally she walks closer to the street when passing. Because the dog charges to the edge of the sidewalk, maxing out its leash while barking aggressively. The owner then walks out at times, the dog is barking to hit her and yell, stop barking. Further creating tension between my kids and the animal. So he knew who my daughter was, and this is not an isolated event. Also not just towards my children. As the post office and many other people in our community have seen the true behaviors of this duo. There were reports from other areas, from others in the area. But nothing is being done because that keeps getting dismissed, or sadly, they feel they have no options or energy to put into this. This traumatic mourning for my daughter resulted in her being chased to the street and having her leg bitten by this unleashed dog. She was completely caught off guard after the dog rushed through a new cheap plastic covered hole in the enclosed porch. That was made by Mr. Nassif. Steve lied to you all about the encounter and continues to combat the removal of this animal for his own selfishness. Rallying the community to join him when he didn't ever address his direct neighbors who have the problems with this dog. My daughters dealt with the pain from this bite down to the muscle in her leg with bruising and tenderness for nearly two months now. In addition to the fear of walking in our neighborhood. This man walks everywhere, as he tells this side of the story. My daughter is a fear to be on foot, period. She will no longer walk past his house in fear of being attacked again, and because he was recently allowed to keep his dog. We see it sitting in the front yard still, leashed and unattended. I no longer want to pass down my own side of the street. This training is not going to change anything, and Steve's way of aggressive training are not only making the dog further act out in aggression. But knowing that this is the second rehabilitation attempt, it's clear the dog is not in the right hands. After lying and withholding information, he got forty people to sign a petition agreeing to support this animal. Then he convinced you to let him keep him. Why? Multiple people appeared in person to say this man is a great dog owner. That he walks her all the time and she's well behaved, but failed to see him yanking her dog leash violently or hitting her when she doesn't follow his commands. The people who see it first, if you recall. Would have never told the partial, or he would have never told the partial truth if. He hadn't testified again, if we haven't testified against him. Steve then admitted to hitting his dog to get her attention when she's barking. He also admitted that this dog is aggressive to some people and he doesn't know why. Well, I know why, and so do you, but he found that the people he knew had no knowledge of the truth and had them support in his efforts. Without knowing the full story or being aware of the dog's living conditions, he pulled on their heartstrings and decided to favor the longstanding animosa resident and his dog. Based on Steve's Facebook post, he has been insinuating to all of his peers, this is alleged. And that my daughter was a stranger. Not admitting it was a child that has walked past his house the last four and a half years. Knowing his dog barks and is aggressive towards my kids. He hits the dog or punishes her for getting worked up, which has further conditioned this dog to target my children. Then for further, people to further insinuate that I have, that my kids have antagonized this animal. Or that it was a misunderstanding and the dog was playing, well, wrong again. We have a zoo of pets ourselves. We have a zoo of pets ourselves and my kids love all animals. Having negative energy around them is not in their nature, nor have they done anything in sort of fashion to egg this on. I assure you, their fear is real. Steve has lied his way through this from the very beginning and it's not worth another dog bite just to fulfill this man's request to keep his pet. He can get a cat, which would be a much better fit for him to contain or restrict, or he can sell his home and relocate. As a Realtor myself, I can vouch for the reduction in property value by having a nuisance in the neighborhood like this. And I'm sure nobody would be knowingly appealed about this problem being next door to them. But if he wanted a dog so bad, he would move for her. We are asking you to overturn your decision and advocate for all children's safety and peace of mind in their own neighborhood, let alone the safety of anyone else this dog may attack. It needs to be removed from the current owner and/or displaced outside of city limits where it belongs. Training will not fix this situation, nor will anything with training and returning the dog to her current owner at one oh eight South Booth Street. She needs a better home that is more suitable for the breed's needs. The owner needs training and not the dog. The photos of this dog bite were provided and that should have sufficed, but no. You've now agitated mama bear and all the positive ethics I've infused to my children. Not to mention the large, or the leverage of the community's support for our youth. It's downright disappointing how this played out for her. I'm an honest, hardworking, single mother of two teenagers who I chose to raise in animosa. My priorities and their safety and well-being have been sacrificed to an animal. I purchased a home. I purchased a home here and I pay taxes on the property. We have a right to feel safe, bottom line. My last intent is to harm somebody or break up a family, as Mr. Nassif put it. But to see members of my own community who would simultaneously agree to keep a vicious animal next to next door to my child, my actual family is absolutely repulsive. My daughter, who was full of emotions, bravely shared her story and how it has affected her, and she was left that meeting on July twenty-seventh feeling unheard and uncared for by members of our own community. People who very clearly made the wrong choice because it's easier to follow suit than to do what's right. Therefore, I am personally requesting a formal apology to my daughter Naomi for extinguishing that young lady's voice. She was prompted by the police, mind you, to stand up for herself and testify what happened to her and advocate for what's right and best for the dog. She bravely came forward and testified in front of a bunch of strangers who were all judging her. More so, her previous substitute, Mrs. Smith, who I later learned she had many abrasive encounters with throughout middle school, even most recently with high school upon returning, acted as if she had no idea who Naomi was. So this just also happened to be the first to speak up in the council meeting opposing the police orders for the removal, in my opinion, then seemed targeted, knowing that there is already a disregard for my daughter. That is first and foremost unfair, but biasness sadly overruled in this case. Familiarity over reality and lies over truth. If it's about having most people on your side, then I win. I started my own petition, was able to accumulate the hundred and seventeen people who support regarding the removal of this dog from the situation that she's in. A hundred and seventeen people who saw the right thing to do without the biasness in relationship with this man. No heartstrings were pulled about breaking up a family, as that clearly is not the intent here. No crocodile tears were used to sound more convincing, just straight truth about what happened. Some sign not even knowing who I am, yet still agree that because the dog bit a child, it needs to be removed. There should not be any other stipulations in place, period. Training does not take biting out of a dog that is already aggressive. Professional dog trainer states, dog owners should be aware that once a dog has displayed behavior like biting, it is within the dog's behavior repertoire that the behavior could repeat again even after years of not appearing and even with the best training help, helping you. So precautions should be taken, especially after your dog has bitten. So I've done further research regarding vicious dog ordinances, as well as unleashed dog laws that were not followed. There were also protocols not following containing the dog for the required ten days. However, I found it did have its rabies vaccination, although I never got the date on that either. Um, but wrong decision was made here, point blank. I'm asking you to do what's right. If this was your neighbor, your child or your grandchild, half of you, I'm sure, would take matters in your own hands. The other half, I hope, would be standing in my shoes defending their child. This man is truly lucky. I have a love for animals, but he's the one at fault here. His abuse and negligence are why this dog attacked my daughter. Please remove the dog before she ends up in a worse scenario and someone else gets hurt. Being as I've sold my house and am relocating, I'm also knowingly passing my property to a family with seven children whom I know would be more than supportive in acting with the dog's removal. That's all I have on that.
Ashley. As this is not an agenda item, the council can take no action this evening.
I understand.
Thank you for coming. I gave you more than the allotted five minutes that was supposed to, because I could see how much it meant to. Any other public comment for items not on the agenda? Eleven point zero, closed session. Eleven point one, motion to enter into closed session for Iowa State Code Section twenty-one point five I to evaluate the professional competency of an individual's whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that person's reputation and that individual have requested a closed session. I did not speak with legal counsel, although there is a statement in the packet that attorney Doug Herman with Lynch Dallas has verified that we are, are authorized to enter into closed session based on this discussion.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for Iowa State Code Section twenty-one point five I.
Second.
Who's second? Second by Rich, second by Teresa. Penny, would you do the vote?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chukin?
Yes.
Dumbbell?
Yes.
Doubt?
Yes.
You want us to end it completely? Thanks, Jerry.